Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. I'll ask that we all stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I'd like to take this time to recognize Dr. Ray Buttram for his contribution to this Murfreesboro City School Board from 2006 to 2011. Those were his years of service. Also for his contribution to children, we have been very grateful for his service on our board. And as all know, Dr. Buttram is now serving as Superintendent of Bedford County Schools. I will now ask for an approval of the agenda.
How move we approve the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Dr. Gilbert. Communication.
Good evening. Yes, the first communication, I'd like at this time to introduce Dr. Linda Clark, who is the Principal at Discovery School, and she does have some guests.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Cindy Jones. Cindy is one of our fifth grade teachers at Discovery School. And Cindy has written a wonderful grant that we now have the benefit of having for the second year. And she's going to introduce our teacher that is associated with that grant. Cindy.
Thank you. Good evening. I think about a year ago, I stood here and introduced Hui Li to you. She was our first Chinese teacher. We call it TCLP, Teachers of Critical Language Project. And we were so fortunate to get a grant. Well, we applied again, and almost miraculously, we have another wonderful teacher. She's here tonight. We'd like to address you briefly. Her name is Cheng Ye, better known as Helen. That's her American.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert, Board of Education members, and all Murfreesboro citizens, maybe you're watching. And it's so nice for me to greet all of you here. And my name is Cheng Ye, the new teacher of Chinese culture and language at Discovery School. And it is my honor to come to this school to teach the talented and lovely children here in Murfreesboro. And I know the students in Discovery School have had a one-year experience of learning Chinese. So in my class, I'm just going to extend my Chinese teaching. And also, I'm going to build up what the students have learned last year with Ms. Li, the last year's school Chinese teacher. And also, I'm going to have the Chinese language learning combined with Chinese culture study. And so I will provide more chances for the students to experience Chinese culture, not only in my Chinese class, but also in my Chinese club. I have been in Murfreesboro for almost two months. And during the time I'm living here, people are so friendly to me. The students love me, and I love them too. And I hope that I can have a very wonderful year with all of you here. And also, I expect the students will be learning a lot with me during the school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd just like to say that Helen is also doing some work at Hobgood and reaching out to some of the other schools and community associations. So that's good to see, so that we can kind of spread that wealth around.
Well, I will say, your English is fantastic. My brother's been living in China for 15 months, and his Chinese isn't nearly as good as your English. And my mother and sister are visiting them right now. So it's exciting to see that there's so much more exchange going on in the world now than there ever was before. It's just, it's hard for us to imagine, since we're a several hundred-year-old country instead of several thousands of years.
I'm also doing some video conferences. We started just the other night and it was very successful with a couple of things in Beijing. And we hope to expand that too. Helen's wonderful as a translator. She just admitted so smooth. You know, when you're Skyping halfway around the world, there's technological problems. She's good at that too.
I know. Yes. Well, welcome. Welcome.
Thanks, Cindy, for bringing her in. And for those who have not seen the Skyping and not seen the video conferencing, it's pretty exciting. So thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Clark.
I had a comment. I wanted to welcome you to Helen, but I also wanted to thank Ms. Jones and all of our amazing teachers that we have in our system that go out and do that extra work to enrich the lives of the students in Murfreesboro City Schools. I know that's, you know, your own time, and that you're doing that with, and it just makes such a difference. So thank you for doing that.
Congratulations to the following board members who have received TSBA Boardsmanship awards at the recent district meeting. Dr. Andrews, Level Four. Mr. Campbell, Level One, Level Two, and Ms. Duggan, Level Four. So congratulations to you. And a reminder about TSBA. Your leadership conference and convention will be held November 12 through the 15th at the Opryland Hotel. The theme, and we're hearing this theme a lot around different meetings, is Expect More, Achieve More. I'd like to let you know that once again, all of our schools participated in the Reading and Schools Day. It was very exciting to go across the district and see all of the volunteers there. And so certainly, we thank Read to Succeed for their work, and also for the reading rally that was held this last Saturday. And finally, I'd like to introduce Lisa Trail. I saw her come in. There she is over there, who is our new Director of Communications. And so we welcome you, Lisa, tonight. And those are your communications.
Board, I'd ask for a motion on the consent items. If there's nothing you want to disperse with or bring up, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval.
The motion we approve the consent items as written.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Before we get started with action items, on PER 46, employee use of social electronic media, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to dispense with that tonight and bring it back to our next board meeting, as the principals and teachers have not had a chance. And we did say at our study session, we definitely wanted the teachers and the principals to get a chance to read it and go over it, and maybe give us back some feedback. Also, with Mrs. Trail just coming on board, we'd like to give her a chance to also review this. So if it is okay, I'll entertain a motion to remove this from the action items till our next one. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, action items.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We did not have a principals' meeting two weeks ago, and so we will be discussing this with the principals who are here. That's on the agenda tomorrow. Our first action item is approval of the contract with the auditors. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, it's time for us once again to engage an auditor. We do it on a three-year period. We have, for the past six years, had the same rate. It was $45,000 per year for our audit services. It is a state requirement this year and for the next three years. They have proposed $49,000, and I think it's $50, or $9,950, as their fee per year. This is, in keeping, very, very good with the overall climate that they have for the past six years, performed it at the same level. And with all the new accounting, federal accounting rules, and all of the new ARIF funds, and all the other things they had to do, it was reasonable for them to have an increase for the next three years. The rate will be the same for the next three years based on this contract. So we are asking for your approval on the auditor's contract for the next three years. And we would then notify the state of Tennessee that we have an auditor engaged.
Board, are there any questions before we entertain a motion?
I have a comment.
Ms. Phillips.
I may, I may not have this correct, but I think that last year was the first year that the auditors did not appear at a board meeting, at a televised board meeting, to give a report. Is that correct, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
I would request that the auditors, that we continue to have them meet at a televised board meeting to give us the report, because I think it's very important for our public to know how well-run our system is, and to hear it from the horse's mouth, that we always have a clean report. I think that's just very, very important. I think it's good, good management, and I think that's important. I would make that request.
Is there a motion for the approval?
I'd just like to comment that it was, I guess, six years ago when we did take bids. And at that time, their bid was much lower than the company we had been using before. So I feel that it's reasonable to go up a little bit and pay them for the work they're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. And Ms. Phillips, is there a motion for the acceptance of, for the approval of the contract with the auditors?
How move we approve it? Sorry.
That's all right. We've had a motion.
And either one of us can second it. Whichever one you want.
We're excited. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Action item B is approval of board policies. The first policy is tenure and non-tenure, PER 16. And I think Mr. Ringstaff is going to present that.
Thank you. The two policies that we're going to talk about tonight are reflections of changes in the state law this year. The legislature was very busy this year. As of July 1st, 2011, every school system is under two parallel tenure laws. One was prior to July 1st, 2011. A teacher had to satisfactorily complete a three-year probationary period recommended by the Director of Schools, and then the school board would grant tenure. And if the certified employee was not granted tenure after the third year, they could not be re-employed as of, after the fourth, as of, for the fourth year. Now, the probationary period is for five years. And the last two years, they have to get above expectations, or significantly above expectations during the last two years, in order to be eligible for tenure. And then the Director of Schools must grant tenure, must recommend tenure, and you guys must approve tenure by a majority vote. And then, if they do not, if they're not eligible for tenure, they can remain on a year-to-year contract after the five years. So they really could last a whole career as a probationary period employee, as a probationary teacher. But once they are eligible for tenure, after they complete two years of above expectation or significantly above expectations, the Director of Schools must either recommend for tenure or non-renew that teacher, or if the school board does not grant tenure, they cannot be re-employed the following year. Now, another change is, once tenure is granted, if they receive two years of below expectations or significantly below expectations, they go back to a probationary status. They cannot receive tenure again unless they have two consecutive years of above expectations or significantly above expectations. And then we have previous tenure in Murfreesboro City School. They must serve a two-year probationary period unless that probationary period is waived by the Murfreesboro City School District. And teachers who are not returning are recommended for non-renewal must be notified by June 15th of each year. Any questions regarding that policy?
I just want to say for the folks at home, I know it sounds very crazy and complex. It's all has to do with the new laws that people have been hearing about on the news. But I had a question. I can't imagine the system not hiring a teacher who qualified for tenure, Mr. Ringstaff. But if we did not for some reason, is there any redress for that teacher? Can she appeal that decision?
I will have to check to make sure. Linda, do you know?
As far as, my understanding is that now, the basic tenure that you have is what's called in-and-out. That if, if a teacher acquires tenure, then if, after she acquires tenure, then she's on two years with Level One or Level Two, then she is going to go back down to the probationary now. This does not affect the teachers who are currently tenured by the old tenure law.
Right.
So that's the reason you still have that old tenure law in effect. But, but as of July, when the law went into effect, then basically, the tenure that exists is an in-and-out tenure for teachers from that point on. You will not have, as far as tenure as we know it now, it will be another couple of years before, really, we're looking at, at tenure for the kind of forever kind of tenure. Which, now, there is no forever kind of tenure. So I think that, that a lot of this is still worked out, but I think for now, the law is going to be pretty solid. I don't see any changes coming down the pipe for tenure, perhaps for evaluation, but I think that, that with the political climate right now, I think what you have on the paper is what it's going to be.
It is going to be harder to obtain tenure, the main thing.
The one thing that I think is really important is that teachers, it's critical that we have teachers understand that, for those good teachers that we have, that are new teachers that are coming in, so our teachers that already have two years' experience will not be getting tenure now, even though they thought that they would be. It'll be another, until their fifth year, they would not be eligible for tenure. I think that, and this is no consolation at all for teachers, trust me, but I think that what we have said in this school district is that we absolutely value good teachers. And, and I do not want to get rid of teachers who are helping children succeed. The impact that I think that it will have on us is that for those teachers who are in other systems that have the old permanent tenure, I think it's going to be very hard for us to have those teachers come into our system, because if they do come into our system, then they go under the new, new tenure. So I think that, that's going to be difficult if we have, well, if we have teachers who gain tenure in another system, and then for them to come in, it's going to be difficult to do.
I'm very glad to hear you talk about how these teachers are so valued, because amid all these changes, that's one message I really want our system to send, is that, you know, our teachers, our employees, all of their staff, they're very, very valued, you know, despite, or despite all these changes.
Absolutely. And the one thing we know is the teacher is the defining element in that classroom. It doesn't matter. All the other stuff matters and supports, and we can't have good schools without safety, and we can't have good schools without food, and we can't have schools without transportation. I understand that. But as far as academic achievement, those students' relationship with that teacher really is, is the thing that makes a difference. And, and the more research is done, the more that is proven. So it's, the tenure status is important, and it does feel like a slap across the face when you have the legislation coming down the pipe. But, but I do want our schools to understand, I want our teachers to understand, that we value what they do.
Exactly. Exactly. Very much so. Thank you.
Mrs. Baker, do we need to go ahead and take a vote?
Yes, if you could.
Yes, ma'am. I will. I'll accept a motion for the approval of PER 16.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
May I comment?
Yes, sir.
There's really not a lot we can do at this level pertaining to the tenure law. There's not a whole lot you can do from the district level. It's all got to be done from the state level. But I want us all to be aware, and I think we are, I think this board is very aware, of the trials and tribulations that teachers are going through this year, with the new tenure law, with the observation, the evaluation situation, with the adoption series coming on. I know, because I've seen the cars parked at the schools on the weekends, on all-day Saturdays and Sunday afternoons. And I want, I want teachers to understand that we are very well-aware of what they're doing and what they're going through. And it is a tough time, not only for them in the classroom, and for them getting ready for observations and the things that they have to do, but it's also a tough time for us as a board as well, to keep things going and try to do our best to keep teachers in a good frame of mind and understanding that this too shall pass, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Ringstaff.
Thank you. The next policy is PER 17, Evaluation of Professional Staff. Due to state law changes, every teacher, every certified person has to be evaluated each year. I would like to point out, on line 17, we discussed this at the workshop session a couple weeks ago. This date, May 1st, should be changed to May 15th. I would like to note that to coincide with line 33, it said, "May 15th." This will give principals until May 15th to do the evaluations. Apprentice licensed teachers, they must be evaluated six times, three formal, three informal. Professional licensed teacher must be evaluated four times, two formal, two informal. Those are the major points of this policy. We recommend approval of this.
Are there any questions to comment? Ms. Duggan.
I know during our discussion at our work session, I requested that we make a formal request to the State Department, ask them to put, to add to the rubric something in writing for a two and a four, because currently, our principals only have hard copy of what a one, a three, and a five is. And if I'm a teacher and I'm given a two, then I may question, how did you get that two? And I think that principals ought to have something very solid to stand on. So I guess my question is, where are we in the process of making that request?
I'll take care of that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Phillips.
And I just wanted to point out to the folks at home that may not realize it, all of these evaluations take an enormous amount, observations and evaluations take an enormous amount of time from the administrative staff. And, and I think that's important for them to know, for the folks to know, the families and Murfreesboro City School, that an enormous amount of time is being given to, to evaluate teachers, great teachers, and abide by the new legislation.
If there are no further comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, the approval of PER 17. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next action item is the election of Board Chair and Board Vice Chair, and I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Baker.
Okay. The next item, of course, is your election of a Board Chair and a Vice Chair. And before I get started with that, I did want to open it up to the board that I realize we do only have five of the seven members present, and the council is in the process of appointing a new member to replace Dr. Buttram's position. And one of our members is out ill. So if, before I begin the process, I wanted to make sure that the board wanted to go forward with elections today, or find out if you wanted to defer them until the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Board, what is your pleasure?
I'm good either way.
Do we think that the city council will have an appointment made by the next meeting? Mr. Washington, you have any idea?
That's our plan.
We don't know whether Mr. Redear will be back or not, so I'm okay either way.
So we move forward?
Move on.
Okay. Okay, now, according to Board Policy BO3, and according to the state statute, TCA 49-2-202, in Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, board officers are to be elected annually for the Murfreesboro City School Board. The state statute mandates that the board only elect a Board Chair, however, Board Policy BO3 mandates that the board elect a Board Chair and a Vice Chair. The term for the officers to be elected would be from November 1st of 2011 to October 31st of 2012. Nominations for the Board Chair will first be given, followed by a roll-call vote, and then we will take nominations for a Vice Chair, followed by a roll-call vote. Keep in mind that according to state law, a majority of the entire board, meaning four board members, four votes, must occur in order for anyone to be elected to these positions. Now, first, and after I ask for nominations, I will have Ms. Ridley call each board member's name, and you please state the nominee that you are voting for, for the position. Does anyone have any questions before I begin? Okay, now, I will call for nominations for the Board Chair.
I would like to nominate Mary Wade.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, if you would call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Mary Wade.
Ms. Duggan?
Mary Wade.
Ms. Phillips?
Mary Wade.
Ms. Wade?
Mary Wade.
Great. Congratulations, Ms. Wade.
Thank you.
Now, I will call for nominations for the Vice Chair position.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Duggan.
And I would like to nominate Susan Andrews.
And I'd like to nominate Nancy Phillips.
Um, I, with, with.
I will decline the nomination. Thank you very much, but I do decline it. Thank you.
I, um, I truly, I truly appreciate that vote of confidence, and I choose to decline. Thank you.
Okay, now, any other nominations? Okay, Ms. Ridley, if you would, please call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Nancy Duggan.
Mr. Campbell?
Nancy Duggan.
Ms. Duggan?
Nancy Duggan.
Ms. Phillips?
Nancy Duggan.
Ms. Wade?
Nancy Duggan.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Duggan.
Thank you.
So you have your Chair and Vice Chair for the next year, running from November 1st to October 31st.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for, for what you do. I noticed that you mentioned, Ms. Phillips, the hard work of the administrators, and indeed the principals are working extremely hard. In fact, this is one of the school districts that I have not heard a request for assistance as far as evaluation. I think our principals feel very strongly that, that they are responsible for the teachers and for the growth, and they want that connection with them. And I appreciate this board, I appreciate the leadership of this board in having that same connection to this school district. So I congratulate you two on your offices, but also want to thank the entire board this evening for your work, because it is tremendous, and as we know this year so well, as the folks in the audience will tell you, we would not have the reading series and the math series without you. We would not have the necessary essential elements that we have as far as resources to do the job that we do. So thank you all very much for that.
I'd just like to comment that the essential resources are our people. Now, the teachers in the classroom, number one, you know, you've talked about the pyramid, they're, they're what hold the whole system up. And all the way up to you, Dr. Gilbert. But everything we do on the board needs to be focused on what happens between the teacher and the children in the classroom. Every decision we make, you know, from the time I started on the board, that's been my goal, and I maybe don't mean it every time, but that's the most important thing. Everything else pales. And you've already said that tonight, but, you know, I'm, I'm most excited about the meetings where we're talking about what happens in the classroom. We haven't gotten to do that much tonight, except talking about evaluations in the classroom. Now, they are important. And, and the intent of the law is very good, and hopefully, things will change somewhat to make it so that it, it works well, and it provides our teachers good feedback. And, you know, the evaluations are not for us to decide if people need tenure or need to come off tenure. They ought to be so that they're a good tool for the principal to learn where teachers excel, and they can say, you know, "You really know how to do this. Can you show so-and-so?" And, "Well, you know, so-and-so, this other teacher in, in the grade above you is so good at teaching this, and she has this technique down. Do you, do you want to learn from her? Or could you try this?" So, you know, as long as, as we use it as a learning opportunity and a sharing opportunity, I think it can be a positive tool. And I hope the principals and teachers will, you know, once they get past that, "Oh, no, what are we doing with all this time?", I hope they'll use it in a real I hope they'll use it in a real positive way. But we have a great system. I'm so proud of how much we've done over the past year, and I know what's going on this year is going to be even more powerful.
Well, speaking of that, great segue, because under reports and information, the first information really is coming from the instructional team. And there are a couple of folks that I want to recognize tonight that are not going to be doing presentations. One is Priscilla Ventrees. I think this last year, we've seen a real growth in the connection between special ed and regular ed, and I think that is in large part due to Priscilla and her willingness to reach out and really form that professional learning community that we talk about at the central office. Another person is Michelle Homa. Michelle Homa spends a lot of time in our preschool, and also is working on, she was at training all day today for the T-Step. So she's in charge of that. She's in charge of working with the virtual schools, with homeschooling, with all of the new kinds of schooling that seem to be coming down the pike. Another person is Crystal Ferris. And you remember, we talked about a year ago how her job was shifting. Well, it has shifted, and it is shifting more. And so the federal projects and the race to the top and the school improvement, all of those kinds of things come under her. And then the next three people I'm going to ask to actually come to the podium, that would be Karen Hawkins, and Teresa Brooks, and Tammy Grisard, because I do want them talking about the changes that we're going to see this year, and just give you a brief update, an action update, I call it, of what's going to be new this year, what they do and how that is going to look different this year than last year. So Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, I think one of the things that, when we're looking at some of our initiatives, obviously, our textbook implementation is a huge initiative in this district. And thanks to you, we were able to purchase math and reading textbooks this year. And that is a huge undertaking for our teachers. But I'm here to say that we've really made some great strides in that. We've, our students have the resources in their hands, the textbooks. In fact, I think you have something in your board packet about, do our students have textbooks? Well, I can tell you tonight, they do. We are still evaluating the teacher resources that we need to make sure that we have everything in place for all the teachers, including the new teachers that have come on board, to make sure that we can put those pieces into place. And we're evaluating on a daily basis. For example, we've heard from some of the kindergarten teachers that they really feel like that they need more of some of the books that were provided so that more students can get their hands on the books. Because originally, they only had six, and they felt like they needed more than that. So we're going to go back and purchase more materials to make sure that they have the resources that they need. With math, it's been a good transition for our teachers. There are some lessons they like better than others, but they're really embracing it. And we feel like that what we're seeing in instruction for students is we are pushing them to levels that we probably haven't pushed before with the math. I've had teachers tell me in conversations that while they were going through those lessons, they were like, oh, my kids aren't going to get this, they don't get it, they don't get it. And then they give them the unit test, and guess what? They did learn it. And because students learn in a different way. So the beauty of this curriculum, it's very fast-paced, and it moves from, it looks at things from a lot of different angles. We continue to try to provide support for them. For example, we have a consultant with the math program in our district for 11 days this fall. She's going from school to school, meeting with small teams, answering questions, trying to help them get over some of the hurdles that they have. And one of the commitments that we made to our teachers was that we would provide a level of support. And so we're trying to do that as we go along. So it's been a huge undertaking, along with everything else they had. But I am very pleased to say that we're making good progress. And this time next year, just think what it's going to be. It'll be a piece of cake for everyone. So thank you for your support in that.
Good evening. I wanted to give you an update on instructional interventions that are happening this year. Where we are right now is we have screened all students in the system. What that means is that every single student is screened and reading to determine if they're at risk for reading failure. We have also identified the students that are in the lower 20% nationwide. So we've identified those children that are at risk. And what the schools are doing now is we're having meetings to, and they're called different things at different meetings, but, or at different schools. But basically, what we do is sit for an hour, and we talk about kids. And we do student by student, skill by skill, look at where the kids are. We progress monitor the kids that are struggling, and we brainstorm what to do. And so it's been great. I've personally been to seven of the 11 so far, and I will go to all of them. And just the conversations that are going on are phenomenal. People are talking about kids, looking at the assessment to determine how we're going to group students, what level of instruction we're going to give them, what level of intervention. So every single school has an intervention time that's built into the day, that's anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes. And that means that everybody's in intervention, not just the kids that are struggling. So if you're doing really well, then we try to extend and enrich what's going on in the classroom during that time. If you're struggling, then we fill in those gaps. If you're working on grade level, then we try to extend again at the level that students are performing. So we think it's a really good model. It's really response to instruction and best practices. So it's going really great, and we will have those meetings every four weeks in which all we do is talk about kids. So it's going really well.
Good evening. I will address teacher support. And Mr. Campbell and Dr. Andrews really talked about what we're doing in the form of teacher support. One of the first things, Dr. Andrews, that you mentioned that we are doing, teachers a lot of times will say, have you seen this? And it is our goal to be in classrooms, and that's what we're doing. We are out in classrooms. That's where we do our job every day, not at the central office, but in classrooms. So they may say to us, have you seen this? And I can say, absolutely. I saw that, such-and-such did that today, has a great technique for that. Let me take a picture and show you, or let me describe what she did, or let me demonstrate what she did. And we are doing that every day. We are modeling for teachers, because what I find is, I can talk about a lot of things, but if I can go in and they can see the literacy block all the way through and see what it should look like, or see the math curriculum put all together, that it works. I had two today that I taught for, and they said, I see it. So that's what is so rewarding. And Mr. Campbell, you're absolutely right, Saturdays and Sundays. But know that we're there with them. There have been many days that we've met on Saturdays and Sundays, because we know that teachers at the end of the day or during their planning period are extremely tired. And we know that they can, you know, sometimes you can think clearly on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday. So we're there with them, planning, participating in instructional dialogue, supporting them in the fact if they see some of those bullets on the rubric and they say, you know, what does this look like in the classroom? That we could have that discussion and say, you know, have you considered this? Or this is what it will look like. And what we have found is, it has given us just an enormous amount of time to talk about those kinds of things. With the evaluation, as you talked about, it's been so positive. And I've seen so many principals, some of them sitting before me today, who have really turned it into a learning process. And I commend those principals for doing that, and the support that they have provided those teachers in order to be able to turn it into a learning process and say, have you thought about that? Or do you think about this when you're planning? Because really, it's getting your thinking process down on paper for your administrator to see. So those are some of the things that we have been doing, modeling, going and talking to teams, planning with teams, particular lessons or units, and what does this look like? Have you had success? Well, how could you go deeper with those things? And depending on what level student you have, what population, how could you meet the learning styles and the needs of certain subgroups? We're having those discussions, modeling, small group, whole group, those kinds of things.
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to express my gratitude for all that you tremendous ladies do. Thank you so very much. And I was so excited to hear what you had to say, that every student is in intervention. I was just so excited, because sometimes parents whose children are doing well, they worry that their child's not going to be getting some attention too, that they're going to be left to just get along. And I'm so excited to find that those kids are having enrichment, and they're being challenged to reach further and go further and do further. And I'm just really excited to hear that, you know, and I wanted to thank you for that.
I want you to understand that everything's not sunshine and roses. It's very difficult when you are asking teachers to implement a math and reading, which they know that that's necessary, so no arguments about that. But then, when you have the other elements too, that it does become critical that there is support there. And so I thank our principals for letting the central office staff be involved as much as they are with the classroom teachers, for having those conversations with the principals. I find that really with the evaluation system, some, and I've taught to school districts, and I find some are seeing it as punitive. Some can choose, though, and I think we have a choice. We either look at it as punitive, or we look at it and try to make the best of it. And I do think that our principals, and I do think that these ladies and the others I mentioned are trying to make it as productive as possible. It's something they do. It's not their job. Their job is really helping children and professional learning communities, and a focus on children. And I will say that this year, it's very difficult to have that focus on children, because I think anytime we're under stress and duress, we turn that focus on ourselves. But I do, again, thank the principals for the conversations that they're having with teachers, the conversations they're having with each other about this year, that we do return the focus back on the children, because I think it would be easy for us to lose the children along the way.
Personnel update, we have in tab four, and your expenditure report, tab five, and attendance report. Mr. Anderson?
The information on the financial report are at the 16.7% of the year. We're into the first two months. Of course, at this point of the year, we have no sales tax revenues, and we have no property tax revenues, because, as you know, they always lag behind two months, so there's nothing on the report at this time. We have received 7.2% of our revenue. Last year, we were at 7.4. If you take out the fact that we did increase for local sales tax options, net effect is really a 7.3. So we're 1/10 of 1% off on our revenue, which I think we'll be just fine on. On the expenditure side, we have additional expenses in the textbook line for regional instruction, and that's why that number's up a little bit. It's also up a little bit because the first payroll from the previous year didn't have July for the people who are in the alternative calendar schools. When we converted over to the 12-month pay cycle, now they do get paid in July. And so it all kind of falls into the program. But we will be having some additional textbook monies because of the additional students that we have. And I'll go over that when I get to the financial, I mean, I'm sorry, to the attendance piece. Overall, we're at 13.8% of revenue expenditures on the 16.7, so we feel we're in good shape on that. Does anyone have any questions about where we are in the financial picture? Okay, the next part is the enrollment piece. And the enrollment piece, we did a different form for you this time. I'd like to go over how we laid it out. The top left-hand side is now the K through 3 section. So we laid it out so you could see all K through 3. And you'll see that our average pupil teacher ratio is 18.72 for our K through 3. The bottom left-hand side is the 4 through 6 section for the schools, and that is at a 20.82 PTR ratio for 4 through 6. Our total PTR ratio for the district is 19.48, and that is also a very good number. We have, right now, 180 students over where we were last year at this time, and we are 163 over the amount that we budgeted, so we feel really strong about that. And that explains why we need some extra textbooks. We didn't anticipate them coming, that many coming in. We did budget 6,850 students, not counting the pre-K, and currently, we're at 7,013. So that's an excellent number. The next section on the right-hand side underneath membership is special ed. And you can see we've broken it down. That used to appear at the bottom on the spreadsheet, and now we just put in the right-hand side, so you can see each one of our schools that have special ed classrooms, and the PTR ratios there. And then we had Bellwoods listed there as well on the right-hand side. The bottom left-hand section is attendance information. And attendance, last month, we were at 96% attendance. This month, we're at 97.2. So typically, we go through that. Once they start getting used to coming back to school again, those numbers pick up. We're slightly behind last year by 1/2 of 1% for the same month, but we're good there. Our overall pupil teacher ratio for licensed personnel is 12.6, and that is a very, very strong number that we have in the district. So the enrollment numbers look good, the attendance numbers look good, and we feel very comfortable where we are right now at this time of the year, and expect it actually to go up as the year goes on.
I have a question, and maybe just for explanation. We have a lot more students than we planned for, so that means our expenditures have gone up. We have more teachers, right? We've had to hire more teachers. How does that work out with the budget?
Well, as I mentioned last time, we should get growth money this year that we didn't get last year from the state. Roughly, we receive approximately $4,000 per student from the state. So we do anticipate additional revenues. They won't show up yet, because we won't know that until January. And then, they do it in two installments now, one in January and one in the spring. So we have to wait for those revenues. I can't reflect those as yet, because the state determines those. It's not a neat, clean number. I could say exactly $4,000 per kid. The state has their magic. They wave over it and make it happen.
Ms. Phillips?
Is our mobile health unit, are they giving flu shots?
I think so. Gary?
Yes, what we have set up is the state of Tennessee health plan that we have. Our employees, we're going to each one of the schools, and our employees who are on that plan can get free flu shots based on the plan. And the mobile health unit kind of moves around in different locations, as you know. So it is available through that too, through the Hope Clinic.
Right. Hope Clinic.
I was really thinking about the kids as far as attendance before flu season hits. Do we offer it to the children?
We don't offer free flu shots to the children unless it's part of it, where they come onboard the mobile health unit and need something, and then we can hook them up then with the Hope Clinic. We ourselves do not give the shots, but we can hook them up with the Hope Clinic.
Now, last year, we were able to hook up with the Hope Clinic, and I just haven't contacted them yet. And my guess is they'll be contacting us, but we did, I know, for all of our preschool classes. So I'm assuming we'll do that this year, Ms. Phillips. They just haven't contacted us, and I can check with Mary Lee tomorrow to see. But I'm assuming that that will happen again. But it was later in the year when we were contacted.
That season's kind of right around the corner. We don't want it to affect our attendance.
That's right. Whether big people or our little people.
That's right.
Dr. Gilbert, on to other business. If I'm not mistaken, this is something that Mrs. Duggan had mentioned once before, and would you like to elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, the board discussed that they would like to entertain discussion of a letter to the commissioner concerning the evaluation. What you have before you is a draft letter. In this letter, we discuss the fact that this was one of 18 districts that achieved a greater than 20% growth in proficiency. We also discuss the fact that last year, our district did shift the educational paradigm, that we turned the triangle upside down, and that the focus of adults moved from looking, instead of looking at whether teachers were teaching, we were looking at whether students were learning. And what that looked like is that when principals went into a classroom, they began to say things like, we're really changing the focus of what we're observing. As we know, teachers may stand in a classroom all day and teach, but the question is whether the students are learning. This year, though, what I find is, where last year, our administrators were in the classroom on a daily basis, really, we're looking at student work, looking at achievement growth of each individual child, and addressing the areas where growth was not occurring. Today, what we find that while we are as committed, in fact, more committed than ever before to assuring personal and academic success of each child, and while we continue to say that we can do this, what we're finding with the change in teacher evaluation is really a change of focus of our district's personnel. And we are finding that administrators are spending a great amount- And we are finding that administrators are spending a great amount of time in lengthy observation of highly effective teachers. And those teachers tend to be now focused on themselves. They are worried about whether they're going to check off everything in the evaluation rubric. They are concerned that they will fail their principals, that they will fail themselves, and most importantly, that they'll fail the children. On the other hand, what we're finding with our principals is they are having less time in the classroom to work with those teachers who are not as effective, and in fact, very frustrated at the fact that it seems that the children are getting lost in the process. We do believe the commissioner is committed to improving achievement for all of Tennessee's children, and we do understand that, as we are, that we want our children to be able to compete on the world stage. We do believe in high expectations, and I think that there's no doubt that we have increased the expectations of our students and of our staff this last year. We are committed to exemplary instructional practices. We are wanting to close the achievement gap, and we are very aware of that gap. However, we are having difficulty accepting the distraction from learning that we are seeing in our district. And what we are asking here from the commissioner is flexibility for those teachers who have proven their effectiveness. Essentially, we are asking that we are able to decrease the amount of observation that we are having with those teachers so that our administrators can address more of those who are not quite as effective. And so that is essentially what this letter is saying, and it is asking that, that we do ask him that he consider this request and that we do look forward to working with him. Again, I think that, that it isn't a question about our teachers wanting to be accountable or to be more effective. It is a matter of time. And it is a matter of time that last year, we had our principals able to spend more in every classroom, where now we are seeing them having to spend an excessive amount of time in those teachers who may not necessarily need that attention.
Ms. Duggan?
I know part of our concerns, and the letter is an excellent letter, and I greatly appreciate the work that went into the letter. In talking with teachers, there's concern about the effectiveness of this particular instrument with our pre-K teachers, also with interventionists, and with our special ed teachers. Because the way that evaluation model is written and put together, it's really difficult for those teachers to show how effective they are because of how the evaluation is put together. We do know, and our teachers know, that evaluation is critical and it's desired by professionals. Because I don't hear teachers saying that they don't desire to be evaluated. I want to commend our principals though, because I hear them saying that they're working diligently to make this be a learning process for their teachers. And that's what it has to continue to be, is a learning process for them so they can become more effective. I understand that additional rubric was sent from the State Department for our special area teachers. But I would like to think that Dr. Huffman would still consider having conversation about the effectiveness for one evaluation for all of our teachers. Because I feel that there's a huge gap there with our current tool for it to be able to be effective for all of our teachers across the board. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
And I will agree with what Ms. Duggan has said. I like the letter. I think it's well-stated. And what I said a few minutes ago was not that teachers are always in training sessions. What I was talking about were teachers that are working outside the training sessions, as are building-level administrators, they're doing it too. I don't want our teachers to feel like that they're in a bind and that they're upset and they're concerned because as the letter says, you go in to evaluate the teacher and the teacher's concerned about whether or not they meet all the rubrics and they get all the check marks. And those of you that have been evaluating, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And teachers are very, very concerned. I mean, we're talking about livelihoods here. And I think, I hope that this letter will get those people at the state to look a little bit different at the evaluation model and the process that we go for. Because I do believe, and I have noticed, I was, I live across the street from Black Fox School, and I noticed last weekend, on Saturday, I counted 22 cars around the building as I'm walking. And I know those are not having sessions for everybody to be there, but these are teachers in their individual classrooms that are working, that are preparing, and are spending three and four hours preparing a lesson so that when that principal comes in, they meet all the check marks. And that's, that's what I'm concerned about. And administrators have the same problem, you know? Because they've got to find it all, and as Dr. Gilbert says, they don't have the time to be out with children within the building. And I think that's what this evaluation process is doing. But I, the letter is great. You did a wonderful job with whoever put it together.
Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Andrews?
I would echo those comments and those concerns already voiced by my colleagues and reiterate one of the points that Dr. Gilbert made, which I think is so pertinent. And that is that she had worked so hard and the whole administrative staff and the principals and the teachers to get the focus on the kids, what's happening with the kids and the learning for the kids. And this, with the best will in the world, this evaluation process, especially for our proven seasoned teachers, it really, it really takes the focus off the kids and makes, and that's not what we want. We want the focus on the kids and the learning in that classroom. And we don't want teachers having to worry about little check marks and, and rubrics and, you know, whether, whether they've met all the very specific criteria. Of course, of course, most of them have. But, you know, I just think that it's very important to get that focus back on the kids in the classroom, so.
I have a question for my fellow board members. Do you feel that there's anything we need to add to this letter that's not said?
I think it's well-written and well-stated.
I agree. I just didn't know if there was anything that was left off that we needed to add. Okay. I move that we send this letter.
There is a motion that we accept and send it. There's a second. All in favor? Sign of aye.
Aye.
Then we will definitely get this signed. I'll, I'll start this off.
Ms. Wade, with your permission, I'd like to send a copy of this letter to all staff tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am, that'll be fine. And while we're signing this, board members, let me encourage you to, when you're out doing your visiting, stop by, encourage the principals, give them a pat on the back and let them know how much we appreciate them. They probably would like to see us a little bit in the schools, you know, just visiting and letting them know that we are 100% behind them, encouraging them and the teachers. They can pass that on because sometimes when we visit, you know how we like to stop and talk, and I don't want us to cut into instruction time, but at least stop by and let the principal and their staff know how much we appreciate the hard work that they're doing. And certainly, the ladies at the central office, we appreciate the camaraderie that you all have developed and your focus on children. And I want to thank the board for your vote of confidence tonight to remain as your chair. The board chair is only as good or as strong as the support that you get around you, so I'm certainly appreciative of that.
He says okay.
Is there any other business at hand?
I want one other comment. A lot of people in Murfreesboro, Dennis Fournier, know that he's been sick for some time. I would just like to ask that we continue to remember Dennis and Nancy, his wife and his children. Dennis is still in Vanderbilt Hospital in the Medical Intensive Care Unit. I think some improvement today, but Dennis is still a sick, still a sick young man that needs some help.
Well, I'm pretty sure when he gets well, he's going to look at this meeting that we're conducting tonight. And I think it's not out of protocol if we just, a big wave to Dennis and Nancy, right there on the screen, let him know we're thinking about him. And we do hope and pray that his illness is soon just gone and he's back to serve with us. And I thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your comments. Is there any other business at hand? And by all means, we invite you back to our work session. We never mention it, but we have a work session every second Tuesday night in the month. You can come, you can listen to us, have discussion. And also, at the meeting, if there's anything that you'd like to discuss out, you know, just out and talk about it, you know, you're always free to do that. So I don't want anybody at home to think that because it's, you get an agenda that it's done, it's not done. Just that we have our study sessions for our policies on the second Tuesday. We'd like to invite everybody to come out, be a part of it, and listen to us.
And it's at central office.
Oh, yes, it is at the central office. Come and be a part of it. And listen, if you have questions, we'll look out and catch you. Seeing as how, I will entertain a motion, if there are no other business, to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second. Right. Hey, anybody come to the House meeting?